Welcome to this Stillwater Gazette, always by the Stillwater Gazette when I'm involved. So, I appreciate being here, I appreciate that you've joined us. My name is Marguerite Reinberger, also known as Margot. Along with Taylor Kyle, the Managing Editor of the Stillwater Gazette, we appreciate that you want to know more about your candidates for whom you'll vote on in the primary election. This forum will showcase candidates who are running, as I say, in the primary election, for the office of Washington County Commissioner, District 3. That election will take place on Tuesday, August 13th, but you can vote ahead. But please vote. The communities that make up District 3, and this is important for you, as well as people you might want to let know that this is going to be on the ballot, are Afton, Bayport, Bayport Township, Lake Elmo, Lake St. Croix Beach, Lakeland, Lakeland Shores, Oak Park Heights, St. Mary's Point, Stillwater, Stillwater Township, and West Lakeland Township. So, quite a few. The top two vote-getters in this election, the Washington County Commissioner, District 3, will then go on to the general election, which will be held on Tuesday, November 5th. In alphabetical order, the candidates are Bethany Cox, Scott Cutter Junker, Michael Schultz, and Mark Weens. Michael Schultz wrote me the other day that he would not be attending this forum. So, as a result, we will likely have a shorter forum, but lots of questions. The candidates were informed that they could bring a prepared one-minute opening and one-and-a-half-minute closing. The allotted time for the responses will be up to one-and-a-half minutes. I will announce before a question if we are going to use more or less time, but I think most of them will, if not all of them, be a minute and a half. My sister, Mary Ann Reinberger, will be the timekeeper. She'll hold up time remaining cards of one minute, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and stop. So, be aware of timing because your response ends there. I'm going to go in alphabetical order with Bethany, doing her opening first and closing last for the question. Bethany, again, will begin the questions. Cutter will be the first on the second question, and Mark will be the third, for the third question, the thing, yes. I have to do this in quite an order because people get, I get called on it. Okay, let's begin with the one-minute opening, Bethany Cox.
Thank you so much, Margot, and thank you to the Stillwater Gazette for this forum tonight. Our community is changing and evolving, and I'm excited that our county board gets to reflect how our community looks today with this new election. My name is Bethany Cox. I'm a Stillwater resident and mom of two elementary-aged schoolchildren. It's my responsibility to do all I can to gain a seat at the table where the decisions are being made to protect the most vulnerable in our community. Now, not everyone has the desire or even the capacity to hold an elected office. Many families are working multiple jobs just to keep food on the table and their kids in well-fitting shoes. I grew up in a family with those same struggles, and for all the voices that are not at the Tuesday morning board meetings, for whatever reason, I will be there representing you and bringing your voice to the conversation as your new Washington County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Cutter.
Hello. My name's Scott Cutter Junker, 60-year lifelong resident of this beautiful community that we all reside in now, I hope. All my life, I grew up in a household with my dad when he was the mayor. He had, I had a lot of aspirations from him because I used to listen to his conversations about when people would call and talk about subjects that were of concern, and it was very intriguing. Both my brothers and my sisters and everybody would listen to him. We had two phones in the house, and it was really neat because he had such a way about him, and we just, it was learned behavior that we, we just loved it. And it's kind of in our blood. My brother's a councilman, my dad was a school board guy, and I'm running because I love people. I love my area. I'm a very vocal person. I tell it like it is, and my dad always told me, "Boy, you speak your mind, or somebody will speak it for you," and that's what I got for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Hello, thank you, Margot, thank you, Stillwater Gazette. I'm Mark Weens. My wife and I have made Lake Elmo and the greater Stillwater area our home for the majority of our wedded years. We have two dynamic young daughters, both attend Stillwater High School, involved with sports, Honor Society. My younger daughter is a scooper at Nelson's. Pirate's Bounty is my favorite ice cream, and my older daughter is a lifeguard at Square Lake. We believe in community. We do a lot of stuff with our church, which has a resource center, volunteer with Valley Outreach. We've got a beautiful community, and we want to preserve it. And I'm thankful for the trust and confidence of Commissioner Gary Kreisel, who has endorsed me for this spot, and he is the current Commissioner for District 3. With that, I intend to take a balanced approach, to preserve those things we find in our community that are necessary, and also to fix those things that aren't quite performing to our particular advantage. Also, having a vision for the future so that we can be-
Stop, Mary Ann, will you just say "stop" out loud? Because otherwise I'll be timekeeping, too. Thanks. Okay. I mean, you can always add stuff in on your questions. It might not make sense all of a sudden, but you're more than welcome to do it, yeah. Okay, first question, Bethany. What do you believe to be the number-one most pressing concern in Washington County, and how should it be addressed?
It's a great question, Margot, thank you. I actually was on a tour today in Woodbury of some of their water facilities. I think water is our most pressing concern. We're seeing PFAS, these forever chemicals, infiltrate our communities and infiltrate our water. Woodbury is leading the way in cleaning these out of the drinking water in their community. And I think there's a forum, a community meeting next Thursday evening in Lake Elmo to talk about those forever chemicals that are in that community and what can be done about it. So, I think water quality is our most pressing concern here in Washington County.
Thank you. Cutter.
I agree with her on that, the water quality. I hear a lot about property taxes, the rising of them, and I know it's with the cost of everywhere, you know, it's a well-desired area to live, and which drives up prices. I'm a real estate agent, and I see it all the time. And the levies that were passed, you know, there was one in 15 and one in, I think, last year or two years ago, and it's a couple hundred million dollars. And people always ask me, "Where does it go? Where does the money go?" They drive down streets that are busted up, and they wonder where all the levy, and I know that's a different subject, but I hear a lot about the rising cost of property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark.
And I agree with Bethany. So, that's three of us. We all agree water is a key issue. One of the things in my current job as a state representative was to really take the Met Council to task on how they do planning, and maybe the lack of planning in a previous generation where they forced Lake Elmo to grow, but they didn't work and coordinate for the proper water amount. So, that's one thing. The other thing is the PFAS issue. And of course, many of our communities are looking at how they can provide those with wells in those communities that have water towers, and we need to work with a solution to find that. I have found that Dr. Gail Cedarburg, who is the representative on the Met Council for Lake Elmo, is listening, and she's a hydrologist. So, that's someone where we're building teams, and we can talk across communities. And I've worked with Senator Seeburger, as well as the mayor of the city of Lake Elmo, to help continue that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue our one-and-a-half-minute response questions. Cutter, what, if any, other areas could Washington County improve upon?
Well, you know, there, I think geographically, it's, you know, it's a well-established area. Like I said, with roads, I think a lot of roads, and I, in West Lakeland Township, there's this one road that goes down to 95 that has been just a disaster. And I've called other people about it, and they keep telling me, "Well, it's the township or the city of Grant," or whatever, "that's the one by the Ghost House, that's bad, too." And I say, "You know what? But people don't pay their taxes to the cities or the township. They pay their taxes to Washington County. That's what they understand. They understand where that's going, and they don't get it that, the fact that it's the responsibility of the cities or the townships to get that done." And I hear a lot about that.
Thank you, Mark.
There's so many things that are kind of at that second level, but I agree with Cutter, and that's one of the primary duties, a transportation plan and fixing that the county does. I was thankful that I could be on what I call the I-36 corridor and work to get improvements right around the Lake Elmo Avenue, and we'll have that same discussion with Century Avenue as we work with Ramsey County in the future, plus Manning Avenue all the way down to I-94, and then those other strategic places where we want to be able to provide the right type of transportation for our communities so it's safe, so you can get kids to school safe. And I think that is one of the big lifts that we have in our budget that we have the ability to make some decisions on. Thank you.
Thank you, Bethany.
All right, Margot, I'm going a different way. I'm going to say housing. Washington County's an amazing place to live. The quality of life here, I truly believe, is second to none. We've got amazing parks and open spaces. It's just a fantastic place to be. Our schools are wonderful. I think housing. I think the Community Development Agency has hired a fantastic staff, and I'm excited to get into office and work with them to really talk to other communities, talk to other counties throughout the country, and really put a lot of thought and energy towards housing and making sure that we've got affordable housing for all the people that model it in our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question will be two minutes, Mary Ann. Our two-minute response available, if you want to use it. I'll begin with Mark. Washington County contains two of the fastest-growing cities in the state, Lake Elmo, which is in District 3, our district, and Woodbury, which of course is in District 5. Let's bring this question home, however. How should the county address the growth in Lake Elmo? Two minutes.
That's a big, for two minutes. What I will say is, you know, these are the plans, the comp plan, that the Met Council has each community so they can provide all the different planning factors. And this is where I think having the relationships, not only at the Met Council, but also with our townships and our cities, to make certain that they have a voice how they want to develop. Would they like to develop fast, or would they like to preserve the green space? And I think a balanced approach so that we can have the right type of services, the right type of transportation, and people feel like it is their community. So, that is engagement, not only for Lake Elmo, but also for Woodbury.
Thank you. Bethany.
It's a great question, and I will also mention the Met Council here. They really help to guide growth in our community and in our county. I currently serve on Stillwater's Planning Commission. It's given me some really great experience and insight into how communities are growing and what's necessary. So, one of the things I think that Stillwater has done really well to increase density within our community, we've adjusted some ordinances and planning pieces for accessory dwelling units so that we can fit more people into our community. And so, I think it's going to take some creative thinking, it's probably going to take some changes of cities, maybe planning and zoning, to make sure that the people that want to live here can live here. Going back to the water piece as well, we need to make sure that we have enough water if we're going to continue to build. And so, I think there's a lot of moving parts that need to be addressed because Lake Elmo is going to continue growing, and so is Woodbury. So, making sure that we're welcoming those people into our communities is going to be very important. Thank you.
Cutter.
Well, I know for a fact that the people of Lake Elmo have been fighting the Met Council to not have this big, massive, they want to stay rural, but it's inevitable, and it's going to be north Woodbury. I think the size of Lake Elmo is going to at least double, maybe triple. And going back to Bethany's thing about affordable housing, when they built that, the development across from the Lake Elmo Airport, those houses are now 600,000, and the ones they built by Kitty Carter from Gorman's at the old Shilken Farm, those are 800,000, 900,000 bucks. And I think it's great that we have that type of person that can afford that. But back to Bethany, I mean, we got to get, we got to get into some affordable housing. And I'm not talking about Section 8 or anything like that. I'm talking about homes that average blue-collar people, 300,000, 350,000, whatever double-income people can do to raise a family, I think that would be a great advantage to that area.
Thank you. We are really moving through these questions. Our forum might be shorter than even I realize, and that's okay, because the answers are concise. So, I actually find, as a moderator, I'm not used to that, if you want the truth, on all of the forums that I've been involved in over the 30 years. So, the next question will begin with Bethany. This is back to a minute and a half, Mary Ann. Bethany, thinking about District 3 only, so where we are. Should the county expand its transportation options here? Please justify your answer and give examples if you believe they should.
Thank you for the question. I definitely think that District 3's transportation should be expanded. So, bus rapid transit would be a fantastic option. My husband and I had the privilege of living in Ireland for 18 months while he was in graduate school. We didn't have a car. We took the bus. We took the train. It was a fantastic way to live. I would love to get our family down to one car, but that's just not workable in our community the way that it stands. So, I don't have the answers. I'm happy to sit in and learn from the experts on the Washington County staff that understand this, but I would absolutely be behind expanding bus rapid transit or some sort of additional transportation option in our community. I know that there are often coming to planning commissions some people that are in the Stillwater community looking to create a more bikeable community. So, there is interest from the community, and I would love to see that through. Thank you.
Cutter.
I'm not a, I do most of my business and my work in the local town, and I know, I think the 291 still runs downtown, the bus, doesn't it? The metro bus, I'm not sure. But yeah, I mean, if it makes sense to, you know, have a mass transit or some sort of better transit, I don't know if it's a rail system or whatever, you know, people, if they got to go to the cities and drive, and it makes more sense to do that, I'd be well for that. Yes, yes, I would.
Thank you. Mark.
Well, this was our second priority, and I agree because I think this enables growth, and this enables folks to be able to experience what they need, whether they're seniors or whether they're people on limited income, to be able to get out and shop, go to our parks, our libraries. So, I think it's an essential mission for us to have that. And one of the, one of the unique things that was developed at the end of the Gold Line in Woodbury is the Collection Center, where they've got human services, they've got a licensing piece, they've got a slice of each part of what the county does there. I think that's a model for the future as we take a look at these different things. Not necessarily that it's rail lines, but definitely bus rapid transit, as Bethany said, I think that's the solution for our large county. But I think our discussions have to go with what the cities and the townships and what flavor they want to have as far as the transportation goes. And this is a community-heavy lift.
Thank you. We'll begin the next question with Cutter, and Cutter, you've actually already addressed this, but you'll have a little more time. Do Washington County taxpayers pay too much for the county portion in their real estate tax?
You know, I don't know. I look at my taxes, and I see the breakdown, and I see it's gone up $1,000 this year. You know, if the money is spent on them, on the six strategic plan of the pie that the county puts together, it all works. That's the system. And I think that if it does do that, you know, I think we'll all win, and we can all buy a house and afford it. Like I said, you got, you can't have everything go to one area. You got to, you got to spread it out so all the pieces of pie are covered, you know, financially and physically and everything, and that's what I think.
Thank you. Mark.
Yeah, I'm not anti-tax. I think taxes are an opportunity, but they need to be proportional, and they need, they need to be spent on the things that we say we're going to spend them on. One of the unfortunate things is Minnesota now is the highest taxed state, and are we getting the juice worth the squeeze? So, when I think about the seniors in our community and the working families that are struggling to pay different bills, from meds to getting kids in shoes or skates or whatever it is, we need to be very diligent in how we assess what our needs are and how we allocate for them. Again, I think this is a community discussion, it's a community lift, and in the end, I think we have more dignity for every, everyone in our community when we proportionalize those taxes and meet the needs of those that live in District 3. Thank you.
Bethany.
I actually feel that the county's portion of our property taxes here is low. We're actually the second-lowest property taxes in the metro area. In the past year, property taxes went up one, just over 1%. The year before that, it was 4% and some change in the previous year. I think that the commissioners have done a fantastic job in balancing the levies to provide the money that's needed and not raise our county's taxes in large, in large numbers. Also, in talking with some of the county staff just to get a better understanding of property taxes, it's complex, in my opinion, and thankfully, there's people smarter than me that understand it, but there are relief valves that the state definitely holds. So, if a family is in their home and they're threatened to have to leave the home because their property taxes get too high, there are resources that the county can direct these families to that can give them some property tax relief. So, I think using all of the resources that are available, the county has done a fantastic job with our property taxes.
Thank you. And Mark, I'll begin the next question with you. What do you think, where do you think cuts, if any, could be made in our county?
Boy, now the cutting. You know, this, I have, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of repurpose that question because we're a growing county. When we take a look at all the different things we're doing, so maybe it's not so much cutting, it is, it is maybe taking a breath before we grow a portion. We have a great workforce, a very dynamic workforce that's technically excellent and does a great job. From all the metrics we take a look at, we're, we're one of the three top metro counties for a lot of those different things. So, I would say rather than cutting, what we need to do is we need to really plan the growth and then make certain that we're investing in the right places. Thank you.
Bethany.
So, I'll go back, Margot, to what I said in my introduction. I truly believe that the county cares for the most vulnerable people in our communities. So, cutting is not something I'm interested in at all. I think every service that the county provides is necessary, from our sheriff's department keeping us safe, community services. Man, I don't know how to even list all of the pieces that they do, but SNAP benefits, WIC benefits, medical assistance, all of those pieces are necessary for our county. And then the other thing is libraries. I can't imagine, you know, some of these families that need a cool place to be in the summer or a warm place to be in the winter, or God forbid, when school is out and all of us moms just need a break, libraries are these great resources in our community. So, I definitely do not feel that there are any places to cut in the county's budget.
Thank you. Cutter.
I agree with both these guys on that, and the growth plan. You have to, you have to allocate the funds correctly, and that's how the system works. And what Bethany said about, you know, all these good businesses that provide these services and all this stuff for everybody, you have to have that to have a consistent system that works in an area. And I agree with these guys on all that stuff.
Thank you. Bethany, begin with you. Do you feel District 3 in Washington County has been provided its fair share of county services relative to the other four districts?
It's a good question. I think that Gary Kreisel has done, Commissioner Kreisel, excuse me, has done a fantastic job in making sure that District 3 is well taken care of. You know, when you go through the different parts of our county, we're different communities from top to bottom, and so I think that's the beauty of a commissioner system like this, is you have representation of each piece there. Now, without having sat in on all of the commissioner meetings and knowing all of the background, from where I sit today, it looks to be fair, but I definitely have more to learn, and I'm excited about that.
Thank you. Cutter.
I feel the same way, and there's a reason why not just District 3, but all the five districts have the AAA rating with the standard and pores. I mean, they're actually doing a fantastic job. They're very frugal with the money, they're very responsive, their mission is on, and yeah, I think it's good.
Mark.
I agree with both of you. I think our board does a great job in weighing the balances and making unified decisions, and they don't always agree, but they all support one another in the will of the board. The AAA bond rating, that is key. If you're going to do any, anything in the future, we don't want to lose that. But I just want to talk about some of those essential services that we have out there, the emergency housing, which was just approved by the state. I think that is going to be a key point where we can help people that are homeless get out of whatever situation they are, understanding whether it's a substance, a relational issue, or it's a mental health issue, and then get them help so that they can get back up on their feet. I think one of the things, and this is Board Chair Stan Karawowski said, that Washington County is a place where all our residents can thrive, and that's, that's our goal.
Thank you. Cutter, I'll begin the next question with you. There has been talk- There has been talk over the years that given the increase in Washington County's population, there should be additional representation on the county board, meaning going from five to seven. That one has been suggested. Do you believe this is necessary?
I, that's a tough question. I, you know, that's another growth thing. When the time comes, if Lake Elmo does get that big, maybe there'll have to be a sixth area. But I don't know and I wouldn't even wanna guess on that one. Thanks.
Mark.
I haven't done the analysis on that particular issue, Margot, but I do wanna highlight another issue and that is we've got a great law enforcement team. The sheriff and the attorney work well together. We don't have the same crime that other areas in the metro do. That's because they are diligent, their officers are well-trained. In fact, our sheriff's department, last time I checked, is fully manned, where there's a lot of law enforcement agencies that aren't. And that's because it's leadership and also great benefits and we're taking care of folks. And the, the new mental health intervention team that was stood up, I think, is, that's just the way of the future. Our, our police and law enforcement shouldn't be out there trying to heal every mental illness. They can call upon therapists that can come out and deploy and help get our citizens that are struggling with a mental health issue and get their help. So I think we've got a great song to say and sing for, for our sheriff and our attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany.
Margot, it's an interesting question. Again, I'll, I'll take a needs evaluation. Again, there are people smarter than me that work at the Association of Minnesota Counties, at the National County Administration as well. And so I think it would be interesting to hear some best practices and hear why some other counties across maybe the nation or just in Minnesota have made a change and what benefits they've seen because of that.
Thank you. Mark. How best should the county board address state mandates that are unfunded or inadequately funded?
Well, that is a tough one because I'm in a body right now that has placed some of those mandates. Well, you know, the, the thing is, is once the mandates come, they're there. You have to do the mandates. In fact, that's about eighty percent of our budget is mandates. The other twenty percent is our flexibility. But, so in the next session, to get ahead is to really have active engagement with our legislative staff, our, our state senators, our representatives, again, as well as the Met Council representatives and folks, because that shapes the future. And I will say that when, this past term, I, I supported every one of the initiatives. There were nine initiatives, from the emergency housing to the anaerobic digestion system to Browns Creek Trail and a lot of things. And it's because the county does a great job researching and putting the staff work into it so that all the questions are answered and our legislative delegation supports them universally. So it's getting ahead of it.
Thank you. Bethany.
Sixty-seven percent of Washington County's budget is mandated, so I believe it's about a hundred and ninety-five million dollars. They can deal with relationships, relationships at the state level, relationships with our representatives that we elect into those positions as well. I know the county's incredibly creative. One of the new members of my Rotary Club here in Stillwater just took a job with the county and she's writing grants. So I think the county is really fantastic and their staff is really creative at making these mandates work with the budget that we have.
Thank you. Cutter.
Well, I think, you know, Mark's the professional here because he's a representative, but yeah. That's good, but, and I agree with what he says. But mandates, you know, we as commissioners have to stay up on that. We have to be connected with the reps and the senators and all that so we can see where the money goes. As long as it's mandated correctly and affordable. Just like this new, the new homeless emergency shelter, I think is great. I know they were turned down for a hotel purchase up here. But I, there's one word missing out of all that stuff that I think, just my own opinion. I like temporary emergency shelter because I'm not an enabler. You know, I like to help people all the time. I, believe me, it's in my heart, it's in everything about me. But you have to have a goal and a time set and place, you know what I mean? You can't just have a sixty-four-room emergency shelter that somebody lives in for five years. You know, we have to turn over a lot of people, otherwise it's not gonna work.
Thank you. I'll begin the next question with Bethany. When it comes to communication between the county and its residents, is the current level of communication adequate? What, if anything, could be improved?
Communication can always be improved is just kind of where I come from. The county does put out its agendas ahead of time for the board. Valley Access Channel records the meetings and you can watch them later on YouTube if Tuesday mornings don't work for you. I think there are, there is always room for improvement. I think digital communication can be really helpful. Something that I learned when helping with the Stillwater School District is that one of the board members creates kind of like a download or a soundbite of what their, their board meeting looked like. And it is such a great resource. I know that there's many of us in the community that go to that page and look for that soundbite. So I think what the county's doing is great, but I always think that there's room for improvement and possibly even I could see that I could help with some of that communication.
Thank you.
Can you read that question again, please?
Yes. When it comes to communication between the county and its residents, is the current level of communication adequate? What, if anything, could be improved?
Well, I think it's adequate. Heck, yeah, there's websites, I mean, tons of them and Twitter and Facebook and you name it. I mean, you can know something in five minutes if you want to with, with the technology today. But yeah, you know, you roll with the changes. You know, when, when new things arrive and things, a new system is in place, you gotta, you gotta be on top of it.
Thank you. And Mark.
Well, thank God we have the Stillwater Gazette because that is one of the prime communication pieces here in the valley. And I agree. I mean, this is kind of, in humanity's struggle is, is we tell stories and what stories are actually heard and get out. And my generation and Cutter's, probably a lot of it was by mail. I mean, I do a lot of texting and emailing. My kids are trying to get me to do more Instagram and Snapchat or whatever. But all these different things where we can be interconnected. The, the issue with that is, is it quality interaction? Does it answer the question? Does it bring us together? I, I'm afraid that in our society, one of the things that, that stresses us apart is that we've got a lot of empty chatter and people don't meet together for coffee, going to Gorman's or going to Lowell Inn or something and having, having an eggs benedict and a coffee and then maybe working out some of the problems in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Cutter. Do you think the current salary of roughly eighty thousand plus benefits is too much, too little, or adequate for a county commissioner? Please clarify your answer.
That's it? Well, I, I'm, no kidding. Is it really that much? I didn't know that. Hmm. I know it wasn't that much a few years ago. So do you think it's adequate?
Yes.
Man, that's a really hard question. I'm sure all of us make a pretty decent living as it is. I'm not doing this for money or fame or whatever, but if, if they voted it in, I mean, is it ever gonna go backwards? Probably not, right? So I would probably not vote for a raise, but I, you know, if they're gonna pay you that, I guess you gotta take it.
Mark.
Not too far off from Cutter, but I'll, I'll put it this way. The compensation package for, for our commissioners is commensurate with the, kind of the second-tier metro area. It's not, Hennepin County is like almost double that. So, but it's more the expectation. And the voters get to say whether you're doing your job. I mean, it's technically a part-time job. Eighty grand for a part-time job, that's good work if you can get it. But I think our, our residents and citizens wanna see what we're gonna do with that. And that is being there, communicating, and then doing the effective things in each of our communities.
Thank you. Bethany.
I am not independently wealthy. I was not born into a family that was independently wealthy. So I do think that the pay is appropriate. I think the amount of time that District Three specifically requires with the twelve separate communities from Stillwater Township to Afton and Lake Elmo, we don't wanna forget St. Mary's Point. Some of these smaller communities need attention as well. And so I think the amount of time that it will take to build relationships, to make those connections and to really allow those residents in those communities to feel heard, I do think it does then add up to a full-time role and I do think that the salary is appropriate for, for the job.
Mary Ann, two minutes. And this is our final question. You guys really went through these fast. Yes. I mean, I know. I've never had a forum where it was this like, usually I'm having...
I'm not shaking anymore.
I have multiples left over, but no, in this case, no, you moved very fast. Mark, up to two minutes, okay? Is there any topic or topics that I did not address and which you would like the viewers to know how you stand?
I, there's so many things. I, I didn't get to say, Bethany, I agree, your housing, I think initiative is aspirational and this is a big community lift. We need to be able to discuss amongst ourselves and our communities about what type of community we wanna be in the next twenty years as Washington County grows. And when I say community lift, that means it, it is our churches, it's our mosques, it is our valley outreach and community thread. It's all these different aspects or it could just be a small community, the Tri-Lakes region, where you do these public-private things. And this is where the county maybe doesn't take full ownership, maybe provides a little bit of oversight seed money, helps in the grant-writing piece where we can get some stuff from the Wilder Foundation to make happen. I wanted to just say one, one story because I like parks and libraries. We've got a beautiful library in Lake Elmo. A couple of years ago, went to hear Carolyn Porter. She wrote a book called Marcel's Letters. And, boy, I could, I could spend all evening on this. Marcel's Letters, so Carolyn Porter is creating this new font for computers. So like Arial or, or one of those. She wanted, so she went downtown Stillwater and in one of the old bookstores, she found a bunch of old letters from a guy named Marcel. Beautiful script. So she goes, oh, this could be neat. She, she took him, she didn't speak French, she had somebody translate him. All of a sudden, she realizes this guy is a Frenchman in Germany writing during World War II. He's working in a tank plant and he lives in Paris and he's sending these letters back to Paris. How they got there, don't know. But Carolyn wrote a book about this, Marcel's Letters. Fantastic book. Got to hear her make, make the presentation. But that's just one of those great things about having local libraries where not only kids, but older kids can go and learn and share in our community.
Very good. Thank you. Bethany.
Yeah. I think we need to toot the horn of county staff a little bit more. I don't know all of them. I've met many of them over the last few months. But I do know that the finance team at the county is winning awards for government finance in our community and I think that that's just something to be very proud of. I also wanna touch on the emergency housing facility. I think it's, it's an amazing facility. I'm very proud that the planning commission here in Stillwater moved that forward to the county or to the city council and that they approve that as well. I think that is a necessary piece to take care, again, of the most vulnerable within our community. The fact that there's thirty beds, you can stay for three months and you can get the full wraparound services that you need to fully get on your feet is fantastic. Our parks, I can't say enough about our parks. I believe July is actually Park Month. The land protection that the county has done is absolutely incredible. So balancing growth with making sure that we've got these public spaces for all of our residents to enjoy. And then Mark touched a little bit on it, but that Central Services Building, that's gonna be, and that might not be the right name, at the end of the Gold Line in Woodbury. I think it's a fantastic model and I hope that as more county buildings age and we replace them, that we look at this Central Services Building to have elections and social services and some corrections. I just, the model that that brings together and the way that it, it really encapsulates a lot of the services that Washington County does in one place, I think is just fantastic. Thank you.
Cutter.
Can you read the question again?
Of course. Is there any topic or topics that I did not address during this forum that you would like viewers to know, your views upon, your views on?
Well, one, one thing I will say is the, the vision statement of the county. A great place to work, live, and play today and tomorrow. I heard they might be changing that or it is in the process, but I love it and I think it should stay whatever, but that's what I believe in right there.
Thank you. Well, that's it for the questions. Well, believe me, that's a shock, that's a shock to me over thirty years of moderating too, believe me.
That's because we get things done.
Oh, it's good concise answers. Before we go on to the one and a half minute closing statements, I encourage voters to directly contact the candidates to find out what other areas of concern you have, what issues I may not have addressed. And they can be found by searching Minnesota Candidate Filings, those three words, Minnesota Candidate Filings, and then looking inside the Secretary of State's website. You're gonna find the contact information for all three of these as well as for Michael Schultz. Okay, I will begin closing statements with Mark Wiens.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thanks again to the Gazette for, for hosting this and Margot and Mary, Jordan, Taylor, the whole team that's here. You make this possible where we can have, have that communication piece with, with all you, all of you voters out there. I'm a guy that serves. Served in the military, served in the House, served in various community aspects on veterans committees, helping homeless vets and also those that are suffering from PTSD. I see this as an opportunity for me to continue to serve my community. If you like a guy that is a leader, that's a visionary, that listens to people, collaborates, works across aisles and different areas, that's the kind of person that I am. I have two ears and one mouth, so I'm listening at least twice as much. Also, in the words of Commissioner Gary Kreisel, he trusts me and he has given me his endorsement for the seat that he currently holds. And if you wanna find me directly, you can go to wiensofwashco.com. That's Wiens, W-I-E-N-S, for the number four, washco, W-A-S-H-C-O dot com. And thank you, I'm proud to serve.
Thank you. Cutter.
First of all, thank you, Mark, for your service and for this, this great opportunity. I can't believe I'm here. Thank you, Bethany, your views are awesome too. I'm gonna go back to, as a, as a young man here in this town, when I had, I have a very goal-oriented, I've always been self-employed. When I, when I put my mind to things, it's amazing what you can get done and I'm sure these two are the same. I, as, when I was twelve years old, I had, I had four paperouts and we'd have to collect the money from the St. Paul Pioneer Press for two days, you know, daily in the morning. And I'd go to these people's homes at five-thirty because I knew they were eating supper. And I knew that the man, or the man or the woman with the wallet was gonna be there. So I'd knock on the door and say, "Collect," and they would, I'd hear the forks hit the plate and the lights go out. So I'd run in the back door and I'd, I'd go, "Hi, you owe me eighty-five cents." And I learned at a very young age that you have to, that's a big responsibility for a young man, a young boy, actually. And then in high school, I had a big vision and a dream to, I told all my friends that I was gonna own a bar restaurant down on Main Street in Stillwater called Cutter's Pub and Grub. And lo and behold, I was thirty-eight years old, I got a call from Dickie Anderson that owns all the boats, a pillar of the community as we know. And I, and I did it and I achieved it. And it's one of those things like this, my dad would be, would be so proud of me right now just for even sitting here, you know, it tears me up a little bit. But he was a mayor and a great man and I just wanna, I wanna work for the people. I, I shoot off my mouth sometimes too much. I say things on Facebook I probably shouldn't say, but I'm very vocal and I wanna work for the people, I wanna win. And thank you very much. Thank you, Gazette too. And you, Margot, and your sister. Thanks.
I guess I had to lull that in. You were a little overstuffed.
I was?
Hey, it was...
I'm sorry.
It was nice comments, so whatever. Okay. Bethany.
Yes. Good government needs new people, needs new voices. I look forward to being the new voice for Washington County District Three. There's a pride residents carry just by living in this county. The quality of life that the commissioners have protected here is second to none. I await the opportunity to maintain this pride our community has. And there's a tradition here in Washington County where the commissioners come together and they compromise. They make the best decisions for the good of our citizens. This is a tradition I also look forward to carrying on. I ask you today to vote Bethany Cox in the primary election on August thirteenth or perhaps tomorrow if you're near the Government Center as early voting is now open. And as Margot shared, please do reach out. My cell phone number is on my website, bethanycox.org and I would be happy to answer your call and help with your questions. So thank you, Margot, for your time today leading our discussion and to the Stillwater Gazette for hosting this forum. Thank you.
And thank you, Bethany, Cutter, and Mark for being willing to be part of this forum.
Thank you, guys.
Not done yet. Oh, no.
We, we closed, didn't we?
No. We have lots of time. No. All of the Stillwater Gazette-sponsored general elections will be held in public settings. So if you wish to attend in person, know that in October, they'll be in probably likely Stillwater City Hall, but I will be getting that information out through the media so you'll know. Thank you, as always, to Jordan and the other talented staff at Valley Access Channels who have made it possible for me for three decades to get candidate information out to you, the voters. Taylor Kyle, the managing editor of Stillwater Gazette, is here and is just writing copious notes as she did before in the fall with the school board. notes as she did before in the fall with the school board. They will appear in an upcoming issue in that newspaper. A big thank you to those watching. Make sure to vote in the August primary election. There isn't much on the ballot, but it's very important to vote. I will see you again in October with several general election forums. Until then, be well.